Hello and welcome everyone on this official platform of Legacy IS Academy. So today in this session, I am going to discuss one of the most important topic with respect to quality and constitution under GS paper two that is special session of Parliament. So the context here is yes, under GS paper two, quality and constitution section. Clear? So the context here is that recently Union Minister Prahela Joshi of Parliamentary Affairs, he announced that special session of Parliament session would be held in September. Now what is this Parle- now what is this special session? Why it is necessary to held a special session of Parliament? So in this session, we are going to discuss some of the important thing with respect to special session of Parliament. So here you can see on your screen that two important articles were there in the newspaper. So this uh this article that is special session of Parliament and how it will work, it is in Indian Express. Another article was also there that is what is a special session of Parliament and how does it work? This article was there in Deccan Herald. Clear? So these two articles are very important from the perspective of UPSC Civil Services Examination. Okay, so first of all at like the context here is that the president like the Union Minister of Parliamentary Affairs, Prahela Joshi announced that a special session of Parliament is going to be held in September 2023. Why is it necessary as we all know that from 9th to 10th of September G20 summit is going to be held? Okay, and then the government is also planning to rename India as Bharat. So there are so many things which are there in our surroundings and also there is a huge protest which is going on in Gilgit-Baltistan region. So recently what happened here is so recently Afghan Taliban has stopped their citizens to move towards Gilgit-Baltistan area. Even the embassies of UK US also gave a a kind of notice to their citizens that do not travel to Gilgit-Baltistan that is POK area. So in this scenario, a special session is going to be held in September 2023 and special sessions are always held for some urgent public importance. Clear? So when does Parliament meet? Okay, first we will try to understand when does Parliament meets? Okay, so as we all know that India is a parliamentary system. Okay. India is a parliamentary system. So the constitution of India is supreme. We are having written constitution, constitution of India. Supreme document. Okay, so India has adopted written constitution and constitution is also called as mother law. Okay, mother law. So the constitution of India provides for a parliamentary form of government and there are some articles like for center from there are two articles that is Article 74 and Article 75 in the center and for states, Article 163 and Article 164. So these two articles are for the states. Clear? Now there is a famous personality which is associated with our constitution also. Okay, that means he is a scholar in political science and whose name is Ivor Jennings. Ivor Jennings. Now Ivor Jennings called Indian parliamentary system as cabinet system. So he calls parliamentary system as cabinet system. Okay, so he calls parliamentary system as cabinet system. Now why? Because cabinet is the nucleus power in parliamentary system. So according to Ivor Jennings, in parliamentary system cabinet is the nucleus of power. It is the nucleus of power in parliamentary system. Clear? Now. Now when we talk about sessions of Parliament. So sessions of Parliament. Now when the Parle- what is session? When the Parliament meet for discussing various agendas, okay, providing bills, approving bills, providing motions, approving motions with the scheduled meeting, then it is called as a session. Okay, so what is session? When parliamentary meet or when Parliament meets, okay? When Parliament meets for a special thing or you can say for discussing the bills. Okay, various agenda. Then approving the motions. Clear? And these things are done at scheduled meeting. Scheduled meeting. So these scheduled meetings are called as sessions. Clear? Now when we say parliamentary session, so let me tell you that in Indian calendar, okay, or you can say India's Parliament has no fixed calendar of parliamentary settings. Okay, so in case of India, India's Parliament has no fixed calendar of parliamentary settings. Clear? Now in 1955, in 1955, a Lok Sabha committee was formed and Lok Sabha committee proposed that a timetable of parliamentary sessions. There should be a timetable for parliamentary session but it was never implemented. So Lok- Lok Sabha committee was formed. So under this committee, the recommendation was that a proper timetable should be made for this parliamentary session but it was never implemented. So generally Parliament holds three session in a year. Okay, so three session. So generally Parliament holds three sessions in a year. Now what are those sessions? So let me tell you, those sessions are budget session and this starts from February till mid-May. Clear? February till mid-May, then monsoon session starts. Monsoon session from July to August. Clear? And then winter session. Winter session which starts from December, November to December. November to December. This is the timeline for parliamentary session. So generally it is only written that Parliament uh that means Parliament holds only three sessions in a year. Okay, these are some important things. Clear? Now how these sessions are determined? So determining the sessions, okay? So there is a Cabinet Committee on Parliamentary Affairs. There is a Cabinet Committee on Parliamentary Affairs. Okay, now this Cabinet Committee on Parliamentary Affairs, this committee determines the date and duration of parliamentary sessions. This committee determines the date and duration of parliamentary session. Clear? Now how many minister has its members? So currently it has 10 ministers. Okay, so this Cabinet Committee on Parliamentary Affairs, it has 10 ministers. Has 10 ministers. Now in this 10 ministers, Minister of Defence, Minister of Home Affairs, Minister of Finance, Minister of Agriculture, Minister of Tribal Affairs, Minister of Parliamentary Affairs and Minister of Information and Broadcasting. These ministers are also included under these 10 ministers. Clear? Remember this thing. Now Law Minister and Minister of State. Minister of State for external affairs. External affairs. These are special invitees to the committee. Law Minister and Minister of State for external affairs. Minister of State is a position, okay, who assist the cabinet minister, who helps the cabinet ministers. Clear? So Law Minister and Minister of State for external affairs, remember this thing, these are special invitees. Special invitees to the committee. Clear? This much is clear to all of you. So after this, the President is informed about the committee decision. So this committee will decide the date and duration of parliamentary session and then this committee inform the President and then President summon both the Houses of Parliament, okay, both the Houses of Parliament to meet in the session. Clear? So this is the procedure. That means this committee decide, okay, Cabinet Committee on Parliamentary Affairs. Now this committee decides the date and duration of parliamentary session. Clear? And then they inform about their decisions inform to President. Clear? And then President summon. That means President call, okay, President calls all the members of both the Houses of Parliament. So President summons member of Parliament. That means MPs. So members of Parliament means Lok Sabha plus Rajya Sabha members. Clear? And then President summons members of Parliament for the session. Okay, so that to meet for Parliament session. Parliamentary session. So this is the procedure. This is how, okay, Cabinet Committee on Parliamentary Affairs decides the date and duration for parliamentary session and then that committee inform to President and then President calls all the members of Parliament so that they can meet for the parliamentary session. This much is clear to all of you. This is the procedure. Clear? Now what constitution talks about this parliamentary sessions? So let me tell you that the procedure, okay, the procedure. So the framers of constitution borrowed this parliamentary session from Government of India Act 1935 which was introduced and implemented by British government. Getting my point? So the framers of constitution borrowed this parliamentary session features from Government of India Act 1935 and this act allowed British Governor General or Viceroy. Okay, Viceroy of India at that time. So this allowed British Governor General or Viceroy of India to call a session of the central legislature. So today central legislature is called as Parliament, it act as Parliament. So Viceroy of India call for the central legislature, okay? So he calls the member of central legislature at his discretion, okay? And the only thing which is mentioned that the two sessions should not, that two sessions should not be more than 12 months. So the gap between two sessions, so in Government of India Act 1935, it is written that the gap between two sessions should not be more than 12 months. So after the independence, when Indian constitution was made, so in our constitution specifies that the gap between two sessions should not be more than six months. So in Government of India Act 1935, gap, the gap between two sessions should not be more than 12 months and in our constitution it is written that the gap between two sessions, okay, it should not be more than six month. So India holds, okay, government holds, Parliament holds three parliamentary sessions in a year. So generally three sessions are there in a year, budget, monsoon and winter session. Clear? Now. Okay, so remember these things, these things are very important. Now. So why these sessions are conducted? So let me tell you. Lok Sabha and Rajya Sabha meeting. Okay, now if you see in pre-independence, okay, pre-independence central assembly met for a little more than 60 days a year. Okay, so in pre-independence, that means before independence. So at that time central assembly, central legislature was there. So central legislature met for a little more than 60 days a year. Clear? After the independence, that is post-independence, it increased this from 60 days, it increased to 120 days in a year. Okay, so in the first 20 years, this was there in the first 20 years, that means after 1950. Clear? And since then, the sitting days of the national legislature was declined. So after this 20 years, that means after 1970s, okay, after 1970s, these days, okay, sitting days of Parliament of the national legislature have declined. Clear? So if you see the figures, so between 2002 to 2021, between 2002 to 2021, Lok Sabha average 67 working days only. Lok Sabha average 67 working days only. Okay, and in 2022, 28 state assemblies. So these thing I am just telling you the fact so that you can use these facts in your main's answer writing. Clear? So in 2022, 28 states assemblies, okay, met for 21 days on average. Clear? 21 days on average. Okay? That is why a conference of presiding officers was held. So let me tell you, because of this figures, so a conference of presiding officers. Okay, this conference was held. Now in this conference, it is recommended that Parliament should meet more than 100 days. So in this conference, this conference recommended that Parliament should meet more than 100 days. Okay, in a year. Getting my point? Then now, this is the scenario, these are the recommendations. Clear? Now there was a private member bill. Private member bill. So what is private member bill? When any MP that is member of Parliament introduce a bill that is called as private member bill. When minister introduce a bill that is called as government member bill. Clear? So private member bill in 2017, this bill suggested that Parliament should meet for four sessions in a year. So this bill in 2017 introduced by one of the MPs which says that Parliament should meet for four sessions in a year. Clear? So this is the most important thing and in this bill only, it also says including a special session in a year. Including a special session, okay, and this special session for 15 days. Now why this special session? This special session should be conducted for debate on matters of urgent public importance. Urgent public importance. So for these matters, a special session should be conducted. Getting my point? These are some of the important things. Okay, now whether constitution mentions the term special session of Parliament? This is also a question. So let me tell you, the constitution does not mention, does not use the term special session. Remember this thing, if UPSC asked this statement in prelims that constitution mentions special session. So that statement is wrong. Constitution does not use the term special session. Clear? So what is special session? So this term special session refers to the sessions of government, okay, which has been convened for some special occasions like commemorating of parliamentary things or national importance things. Okay, for these things, the sessions which are conducted, those are called as special sessions. Now who summon this special session? As usual, President of India on the recommendation of Cabinet Committee on Parliamentary Affairs, President summons the Parliament, this special session of parliamentary session. So summon the President who summons a regular parliamentary session will also summon the special session of Parliament as per the provisions of Article 85 sub clause 1. Clear? So Article 85 sub clause 1, what it says, it says that the President shall from time to time summon each House of Parliament to meet at such time and place as he or she thinks fit. This is given under Article 85 sub clause 1. Clear? Now another thing is who is going to chair the special session of Parliament? As usual, for the two Houses to be in sessions, presiding officers are there and presiding officer should chair their proceedings. So speaker is there in Lok Sabha and chairman is there in Rajya Sabha. These are presiding officers and they will chair the proceedings of their respective Houses. So the presiding officers can also direct the proceedings of respective Houses that this much time and these things should be limited. Okay, for example, the procedural devices like question hour. Okay, so for example, this parliamentary device question hour would not be available to MPs during the session. Yes. In special session of Parliament, question hour would not be available to MPs. Remember this thing? These kind of special statement can be asked in prelims examination. So in a special session of Parliament, question hour would not be available for MPs during the session. Clear? Now Article 352, now this Article 352, Article 352 of the constitution which talks about national emergency. This article talks about national emergency. Now it does refer a special setting of the house. Yes. Article 352 refers the special setting of the house which deals with proclamation of emergency. Getting my point? It deals with proclamation of emergency. That is why in 44th Amendment Act of 1978, added the part related to the special setting. So in 44th amendment which came in 1978 and in this amendment, a part was added which is called as special setting. So this special setting was added to safeguard, to add the safeguards to the power of proclaiming the emergency in the country. So this was added to proclaim the emergency in the country. Getting my point? Now if a proclamation of national emergency is issued when Parliament is not in session, suppose if Parliament is not in session and if the national emergency proclamation is issued, okay, then there is a procedure that 1/10th of Lok Sabha MPs, 1/10th of Lok Sabha MPs, they can ask the President to convene a special meeting to disapprove the emergency. So if Parliament is not in session and the proclamation of emergency is issued, then 1/10th of Lok Sabha MP can ask President to convene special meeting so that the emergency can be disapproved. So these are some procedures. Clear? So remember these things, these things are very important. So how it has been involved? How this special session of Parliament was involved or how does it work? Okay, how it will work? Clear? So government is going to conduct a special session of Parliament from September 18th to 22nd September. Okay, and constitution as you can see here in the newspaper itself, they have given that constitution does not define a special session. Okay? So the term sometimes refers to the session of government which has convened for some specific occasions for national importance, for parliamentary, commemorating parliamentary things. Okay? So what is the history of special session? How does it works? So let me tell you the division. So special Parliament session, so Parliament session. So you can divide it into two. Okay, so the special session can be divided into two part. So special session of Parliament can be divided into two parts. Now first thing is proper special sessions. Proper special sessions. Another is midnight sessions. Clear? Now what is sessions clear now what is proper special sessions proper special session means which involves debate discussions each and everything so this happens with debates or discussions or discussions midnight session it happens without discussions it happens without discussions clear now when we talk about agenda agenda it has been to either celebrate a historical legacy okay so agenda might be historical legacy historical okay historical thing like Indian freedom struggle or Indian independence to pass a bill getting my point this could be the agenda okay another thing is it holds a special place in the parliamentary calendar okay and the history of democratic India so it is basically related to some of the various historic things or some most important issues clear remember this thing so when we say special sitting of Lok Sabha so special setting of Lok Sabha was also organized in two thousand twelve okay so let me tell you that special sitting of Lok Sabha it was also organized on thirteenth May two thousand twelve okay that means Sunday was the day on this day now why special setting of Lok Sabha was organized on thirteen May two thousand twelve the main reason was to commemorate sixtieth anniversary sixtieth anniversary for what sixtieth anniversary of first sitting of parliament first sitting of Indian parliament that is why special setting was conducted clear then special sitting of Rajya Sabha also conducted so special sitting of Rajya Sabha was conducted in nineteen seventy seven as well as in nineteen ninety one okay when the Lok Sabha was under dissolution to decide on president rule clear so Rajya Sabha special session was also conducted and then this year also in two thousand twenty three we have government is going to conduct special session okay so Ahmed's Amritkal parliament is looking forward to have fruitful discussions so in two thousand twenty through three also parliament is looking forward to have fruitful discussions clear and debates now what would be the agenda okay what would be the agenda of these things the question here is what would be the agenda why parliament is conducting these special sessions okay for what purpose government is going to conduct these special sessions is there any specific reason so there might be some reasons like government want to tell their achievements like in G twenty summits achievement okay or some matters related to urgent public importance then some important bills can be introduced important bills can be introduced which cannot wait for the next session clear these are some special things okay so that is why government that is why parliament is looking forward to conduct a special session of parliament from eighteen of September till twenty two this much is clear to all of you okay so I hope this much is clear okay go through all the newspapers so that you can get different different viewpoints clear and read newspaper wisely okay so I hope this much is clear to all of you with respect to special session of parliament okay so for more such videos you can like and subscribe our channel that is Legacy IS Academy thank you so much